Good evening, welcome to the special meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, October 19th. The purpose of this meeting is a discussion between the mayor, Controller, and the city council determining the 2018 proposed city budget. Roll call Michelle, please.
Present. Councilwoman Azar.
Present.
Councilwoman Crossen.
Present.
Councilman Devon.
Here.
Councilman Elliott.
Here.
Councilman Garrison.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Nassar.
Present.
Councilman Nation.
Here.
Eight are present, one is absent.
This is, uh, there's not gonna be any public comments or questions regarding this. This is just a discussion between the council and the mayor and controller. So, mayor, I'll turn this over to you.
Okay.
Ms.
Okay. Well, go ahead. We'll, we'll, let's let the mayor speak, but mayor, I told Chuck and Judge that they can do those first.
Okay.
I'm sure you agree on that.
No, I have no problem with that at all. Um, well, I'll just say a couple of quick things. One, this is, um, we have provided you with a summary sheet like we do every year. That's all of the budgets the council will approve. It shows the 2017 approved and the 2018 proposed. As you would expect, this is our first draft of the budget, so we'll be making some additional cuts, but we really need to do some updated cash flows and looking at the 1782 notice changes we're making this year. There's a couple of extra factors this year that we don't normally deal with to ensure our cash balances are maintained at what level we believe they are for next year for the funds that we're, um, have moved some expenses over to. So, what I would propose that we do is go through it by your book. Um, it's in alphabetical order, it's based on the DLGF forms, but more than works would be first, other than that we'll do the clerk and, and the judge, and then we'll come back to the board of works to be the first one that we discuss. Okay. All right. So, the clerk is actually on the second page.
Uh, the clerk's on the first page. It's on the second.
Is it? Okay. Mine's on the second page. Uh, in my book.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was talking about the summary page.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Hanley's here, but overall, there was no changes. It only changed as because of health insurance increases.
Yeah. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions for the council?
Answer anything if you want, that I can.
All right. Any questions for the council? Thanks Chuck.
Uh, the judge is here as well. He actually had a reduction in his because health insurance was decreased. A new employee is not on the city, uh, health insurance, so we were, they were able to reduce that. He's here to answer any questions if you have.
Good afternoon, councilmen and women. If you have any questions for me, I'd be willing to answer those.
Page 11. Page 11.
This is judicial service. Any questions for the council for the judge?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hey, mayor?
Yes.
Your turn.
Hang on a second. I was looking for something a little bit. All right, very good. Okay, um, board of public works then, back to page one. Um, we're showing a $98,000 reduction out of this fund, but we're not done with this one with the services contractual line item. Everything else should be, uh, good to go. We're hopeful that we can reduce services contractual some additional dollars, but obviously, not knowing the status of the public safety bullet, and we know it's been tabled, it may not happen, whatever, um, there's some factors there with the, that we're gonna have to do with 911 contract that would carry over into 2018. And so, we would probably move the difference in our trash contract back into the board of public works versus edit in order for edit to cover the 911 contract. So, I mean, it's as broad as it is long. One of the two will have to go, uh, to one place and the other one will have to go to another. So, I'm hopeful that we'll still be able to make some reduction here, but I don't wanna make that until when we come back, um, in our October meetings, we'll let you know what the recommendation is.
So, lower than the 500,000?
Hmm. Yeah, excuse me.
Cause, cause looking at, uh, this year, June's the last statements we have, you'd only use 12% of that.
Yeah, because we had a cushion in there for trash, but since we had residual monies left over from '16 that carried over to '17, we're gonna, I think we'll be probably 97, 98% covering the Republic contract this year with the waste and refuge line item. But next year, we won't have that luxury because we won't be carrying that much money over into '18, so we will have to put pay for it either out of Board of Public Works Services Contractual or Edit, and the same thing with 911. One will have to go to one place, one will have to go to the other.
So, one or the other, or both will go into the board of works?
No, one or the other.
Okay. And then the other one would stay in Edit?
And maybe with, my preference would be to put the Republic contract in board of works and leave Edit, or, uh, excuse me, 911 contract out of Edit.
Council? Councilman Garrison?
Mayor, before we get too far, do you have estimates on where our revenues are gonna be for '18 and what our expenses are gonna be?
All the revenues are in the back of your notebook, and all the expenses, I mean, everything's in your notebook.
Right, but you have a grand total of that? Do you know that?
You mean for everything total? Um, we've done some preliminary analysis, but I don't have anything to hand out tonight because I don't want to be official document.
Right. Well, I think-
Yes, maybe drill down, help me with your-
Well, I, you know, I, I think this is nice to do this, but I think we're kinda getting into the weeds, you know, on each of these line items and each of these departments like we've done before where we bring department heads up. And for my money, um, I, I'd just like to see what, what our revenue's gonna be, what our expenses are gonna be, and are we gonna spend more than we bring in, or are we gonna, we gonna make it reduced so that we do less? To me, that's, that's the main thing that's important.
And we'll, that's what we'll go through in October, but I can tell you that when you look at all those budgets right now, we've got an increase of about-
What percentage percent? What do you think? Everything.
1.3.
About a 1.3% increase.
On that page of this.
Um, moving back in age of what we handed out here, this is just a basic summary for now, without any cuts. So, if you, these are all the funds that you guys approved. We've got about a 1.3, 1.3% increase, about 1.1 million dollars. So, and then when you look at the individual budgets, they're all balanced except for the two golf courses next year. But that's the kinda data that we'll be bringing in more detail once we do the cash flows, um, updated cash flows. So, if you just look at this and take all those budgets together, it's a 1.31% increase. So, the ones in red are down, the ones in black are up. Well, there's one there that's not, yeah, for some reason, it's not red. But, and I'll give you the example, um, there's a couple of things here that really stand out. One is, and I, we, we're, I was gonna get to this last, but we'll do it now, it's fine. If you look down at, we'll, we'll just start at the general fund just briefly. Um, we've got an 860, $56,000 increase at the general fund. That is three things. That's moving the fire and police pension group health to fire and police budgets, taking it out of the pension budgets that we've been talking about, and the increase in, in group health. That's all that's in, I mean, there's a few hundred little tiny dollars, but that makes up that whole 856,000. Probably 90% of that is just those three things. Our overall group health for general fund, moving about 300,000 of fire and 300,000 of police pension expenses to, back to the general fund instead of the pension fund. Um, if you look down at, I'm just gonna kinda pick the big ones here, LRS. We increased the budget by 450,000 because we're getting 450,000 that we have to spend because of the new gas tax and excise, or the, your license renewal taxes. And so, we have to, um, we're increasing our spending both in LRS and MVH. So, if you look at an MVH right below it, by $800,000 there, 450,000 in LRS because of paving, basically, road work, road maintenance. Those were increased revenues that will go directly to paving and streets. And then transit has a 354,000 increase. We believe that's a little high. Brad Miller submitted that, and, and we've been working with Debbie, and so we're gonna make some reductions there. So, those are the three big ones, and that's the only reason why we have increases in the budgets.
Okay, so the, the red item under police pension, the 323,000, that's been moved, you said general fund, but is there-
Police general.
Police general.
Yep.
So, and where is police general on here?
In the general fund.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's part of the general fund.
Yeah, so you don't have that broken out? You've got-
What we do in here, but it's-
So, you don't, you don't have, fire general is also in there?
Right. That, that last page is just the total of each fund.
All right.
The general fund is in the first part, if you look.
Okay.
All the breakups in the first page.
Each department.
Okay. And then I guess my next comment or question is, it doesn't look like, I know, we don't know about if there's gonna be any new tax revenue coming our way.
Right.
But as of today, we're not getting anything.
So, there's nothing in there for that.
Right. So, what I'm, what I'm wondering is, we, we really haven't done anything to, uh, as Earl was talking about, either reduce spending or increase some of our, what do we call that, Earl? All of our fundable accounts to bring those levels up. It, it just looks like we've kinda done what we've always done.
No, it's not true at all. Um, if you look at the ones that have, I mean, once again, out of the 1.1 million dollars of a total increase in budget, you know, that's prime, the biggest thing that we changed was group health went up quite a bit.
Oh, what? I'm sorry?
Group health.
Group health.
Health insurance.
That's probably the biggest thing that went up across the board in every category. And then we've increased, just between LRS and MVH alone, that's 1.3 million dollars or so, 1.4. And so, and that's-
And that's new revenue.
And that's new revenue that we have to spend on roads. We don't have to spend a penny of it, but we have a 50/50 split now in MVH where our expenses are half, 50% of what we take into MVH has to be spent on roads, and only the other half's on, uh, regular operating expenses. So, when you look at this, there's actually, I mean, we, there's reductions, and there'll be additional reductions. This is just the first draft.
Okay.
So, it'll go down from here.
This is helpful to get started, thanks.
If we took those two out, then you'd see an order of decrease, but those are pretty big, you know? Those are significant.
I hear you.
One of the things I, I think people need clarification on, mayor, is, you know, we're having this meeting, you know, this month and today, but you had said you're gonna come with more changes, you know, later on. I guess people are wondering, why not have those changes now? What is two weeks, three weeks, in October, gonna make a difference?
Because we have to cash flow everything all over again because of what we're doing with the 1782 notice for this year. So, we wanna make sure that we're building reserves for the end of next year. So, um, there's just more work to be done. They're not gonna be significant changes, but there'll be enough to, really, the general fund. I would say the general fund will go down, um, transit will go down, and seems like there was one other one. That's really it. So, there'll be a couple line items and three budgets. Everything else will stay the same.
Okay.
So, it won't be a lot of change.
Okay. But reductions.
But reductions. Yeah, we can't, we can't increase anything now, it's over.
Right.
So, it, well, I, and just to follow up on Councilman Garrison's point, I mean, we don't have to do it this way. This was the chance, and it's always been, I mean, we've been doing it this way for 10 years, and I'm not saying it's the right way or the wrong way, it just gives you a chance to ask any particular thing. So, I just wanted to hit on the highlights on it, not spend much time on which one or which one was really changed.
I'm okay with highlights. I, I just, I mean, for my money, I think it's kinda wasting your time a little bit. Highlights are okay. Um, you know, sometimes we, in the past, we just, this part of this, and we've just said, what questions does the council have? Anything specific, anything that stands out, and that seems to be more efficient. But, uh, I mean, I'm happy to stay as long as you want.
And I wouldn't want somebody to come back and say we didn't cover it enough because there are, there's a few little line items that have changed, and they may need an explanation. But if you don't, you know, I'll do it, one under the pleasure of the council. If you say we're done and we're good to go, I'm good to go.
No, I wasn't implying, I wasn't implying that.
Now, I know. It's just, you may already have questions, and so if you're ready for those, when we get to these individual budgets, you know, fire away. Otherwise, I'm just gonna point out changes really next year, and I'm not gonna talk about the rest of it.
You had, you said that this was a lot like last year. But actually, the budget is because the budget was balanced last year, and these will be balanced budgets as well. The only thing that has changed is what the state did with, um, the circuit breaker credits, so that we're making that all up this year, and we will continue to weigh the deficit, so that's the only difference. But as far as the budgets themselves, yeah, they will be balanced.
I guess I was just looking for reductions to see if maybe you had already brought, you know, bring some big reductions for us that was gonna make us elated.
We're still working on that.
Okay.
No, but we'll have a balanced budget again, so we'll still have money to go against the deficit for three years in a row.
I know, but, you know, how much? Half a percent? You know, it, I mean, I guess I'm impatient because-
Me too. But without major layoffs, you just can't get there a couple of years, which is not possible. So, we continue to, um, you know, with these changes, we're making, uh, from the 1782 perspective, we'll reduce the deficit almost in half this year, permanently reducing. So, it'll be down to about 4 million for next year to deal with. So, we're getting there without any new revenue. If we got new revenue, we'd already, I mean, we'd be there with reserves at the end of next year a little bit. So-
Well, you, you keep returning to the 1782 notice in 2017. I guess, I mean, I'm still trying to figure out if we should tackle that first before we do the 2018 budget. What are your thoughts on that?
Now, um, they're two separate things, but there are, the correlation is the cash flows. So, in order for us to maintain the proper cash balances to support the '18 budget, we just need to make sure that there aren't some, something else hasn't happened or is gonna happen between now and the end of the year that will affect that. And so, we feel really good about the '18 budget, we feel good about the plan we proposed for the 17 budget. We've gotta get the 2018 budget approved by, before November 1st, and we have to have all the things to the DLGF. Everybody has to have it, we're gonna do the DLGF, not the stuff, by December 15th.
All right, so we'll have all, we'll have an understanding what your thoughts are on borrowing, uh, when we have this discussion.
In October.
Well, that's gonna be to, uh, 1782, uh, we have to have issues with that as well as what we're gonna do next year, so they're almost intertwined, right?
Well, there's, obviously, one affects the other, but for one to go first or the other to go first doesn't make any difference because they both just have to be down.
Well, if you're gonna do the redevelopment loan, uh, what Paige says that we're going to do it in December and have to renew it in, in June, is that correct?
We, the plan would be to renew it in December for one final time. We can only renew it twice, and then a new one would have to be taken out for the second part of next year. So, we would renew the existing amount in December, or possibly a little bit lower, and then renew a, a much lower one in June.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll play that out, showing as we step back from this, this is the detail part, and then we'll kinda take that higher level.
Okay. Councilman Olick?
Now, to try and, uh, I think reinforce what, uh, Mr. Garrison was saying, uh, from my perspective, I'm gonna make sure I'm comfortable with the Form 2 revenues, and then form my opinion of what I think the surpluses should be in each of those funds, and then that forces out the total expense. It's a lot fewer numbers to look at, a lot easier, and it's the surplus that's the important number. Because if we're gonna lean down the borrowing, which I think is, temporary borrowing, which I think is the will of this council, we've gotta have surpluses, and we gotta have money coming from somewhere to do that. Now, um, there are 2018 numbers in the comprehensive financial plan, and there are 2018 numbers in the budgets, and they don't sync up in many cases. So, particularly, when we look at the 2018 appropriation shifts, there's some of those that appear in the 2018 column. So, what, I mean, what, what numbers?
Use our numbers, what's in here. Uh, you know, Paige put together what she proposed to us to do, we'll make some adjustments to that. And we're gonna have her go back and update the comprehensive financial plan once we finalize it.
Okay.
So, use our numbers. How, the totals are the same.
How did Paige do in the proposed property tax revenue numbers for 2018? I mean, she assigned them in the comprehensive financial plan.
Right.
And we're using those numbers, the projection, the total.
I mean, you haven't changed them.
Nope.
Those revenues from the comprehensive financial plan are good, property tax revenues did not appear on Form 2. You know, you gotta fair it those out.
Right.
And set the Form 2 revenue and add the property tax revenue. So, if I use her 2008, the comprehensive financial plan, 2018, uh, property tax revenue amounts.
Yes.
And then the Form 2 amounts, that'll give me the-
Yes.
The total revenue.
That's what we're using.
And then the expenses, use the budget documents.
Our budget documents.
Yep.
Because she didn't have this, the final.
She just added on to the 17. See, once again-
Okay.
A hundred percent spend, and then she added.
And I think that works for me. I just, I just wanna make sure I'm-
Yes. So, let me just give you one example, not to mess you up, but I was looking at something today. You know, she's proposed that we put X number of dollars in police and fire pension and MVHs, and we won't need to do it those levels. That was just her recommendation based on the initial numbers she saw. But we made some changes in expenses, so we'll adjust those, how that property tax pool, that total amount gets combined. That's it.
Okay. So, then, so then I need a, I need a new forecast of where the property tax revenue is gonna go.
Well, right now, I just noticed that today, though, it's only $41,000 in one of them, but I mean, there's no reason to put that in. And so, there's a couple of little changes, they're very small.
Okay.
Probably 100,000 and 141,000.
Okay.
This is an example.
Thank you.
But that's what we'll adjust, um, versus what she thought we ought to do.
Cause after today's meeting, or today or tomorrow's meeting, I'm gonna pull together what I think the answer is, and, and what I think our answer ought to be, and, you know, and get that out to everybody, to have them start, uh, you know, thinking about it and, uh, forming their own opinions.
Yep.
As we go forward.
Use those numbers.
I yield. Thank you.
Go ahead, man.
Um, let's see. So, next is Controller, um, small increase to group health.
I had a question.
Okay.
Uh, financial analyst, can you remind us what that is, or what that person does?
I need to remind you of your department. In my department? Let's see, let me look at all of my people. They were named before I got there, so, actually, everyone does a little bit of everything. They, uh, I have less staff than I used to.
They have half the staff.
They, uh, they work their tails off, they work very hard, and they do a great job.
And that's not in question, but thank you.
I'd just like to give them a plug when I can, because they work so hard.
So, I don't know which position.
Well, the reason why I asked is on your financials, uh-
I have.
There hasn't been any expense on that yet?
Oh, right, that's one that I've been, I really need to hire.
It's an empty.
It's an empty position, and I really need to hire it. I've been waiting till I had my other positions to fill to see if we actually needed, or if I could do a part-time person, so I'm still working on that one, but, um-
So, you haven't had someone for six months?
I have not had anyone, I've not hired anyone yet. But we really need to do that because my ladies are-
So, what does that person do?
What will they do? They will do, um, probably take over a lot of bank reconciliations that we do, our fixed assets, our, um, we do annual inventory, go out and do, do the annual inventory, update all the fixed assets for all the departments, do that monthly as, as assets are purchased and sold, um, and they'll fill in any other positions. I like to cross train, so I don't want just one person doing payroll, one person doing accounts payable. I like two or three people to know how to do that. So, whatever we have going at that time, we do all hands on board, and they do their regular duties, and then we pull over X amount as well. Like February 2 season, we have everyone working on W2s, 1099s, um, the end of the year, adjustments for the audit. We have a lot of lead reports that we have to do for the auditors.
I know it's only one position, but we've been fine for six months without that position. What, why can't we be about that?
My ladies are working a lot of overtime.
I think there's a couple of things to think about. One is we've reshuffled duties. We've had, you know, some turnover overtime, and we've reassigned people to different jobs, and, and as they adapt, and then we cross train, we're trying to figure out kinda what's left that needs to be put in that last position. That's all.
Right.
I mean, it needs to be filled, but I don't wanna fill any positions unless we get to a point where it's a last resort.
And if I could do a part-time person, I will, but we're still, we're still figuring things out, and I don't wanna hire till I know I absolutely need it.
Okay. I'm sorry, didn't hear if you're there.
No, it's a bit, you know, kind of a, there, there's a couple of positions like that, but not very many. And so, at one time, we had eight people in the Controller, then we have four in the Controller, and so, uh, we're not gonna go, go back to have an eight, but we definitely need that position. It's just what they will do and what skillset they need to bring into it.
All right, the next one is- And services contractual, what is in that line? Is that just-
For my, for my department? Yeah, we, some of it goes to public sector group, some of it goes to Zobrio, who is our, um, tech support for our fundware system, our current financial system. It was put in in 2005. We have a lot of technical issues with it, and it takes a lot of phone calls, usually in opportune moments, but, uh-
Well, just for the record, you mentioned public sector group first. Um, how much is, is in that one? How much public sector is in the, the total for this year, would you say?
Off the top of my head, I do not know.
Could you get that?
Sure, we give that to you every year. I can give you a rundown for 17 if you like.
Please.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, there's M-Bond there too.
Yeah, and M-Bond Associates as well, as well as-
That's a big one.
Some bond, you know, tax anticipation work that we get done, you know, have to hire an attorney for that. There's different things, but-
Okay. So, when Dean was here this last time, was that, that was through sanitary, correct? Or is that through?
That one would be sanitary.
That's through sanitary.
Okay.
But when Paige is here, that'll come out of here.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Um, data processing or IT, statements to change their name. Uh, looks like the only increase there is group health.
I had a question, I'm sorry. Um, on system administrator, I noticed this year there was only seventeen percent as of June.
Yeah, I think he hired somebody, so I don't know when they came on, I couldn't tell you what month.
Question is, is we went for as long as we did without somebody, why couldn't we go with the remainder of the year?
Because they had other people picking up those duties until he found the right person that had the skillset for that job. And somebody has to do it until you find the right person. Very technical hires there.
Now, but the revised budget for IT, according to the June financial statements, nine hundred and twenty-eight, six ninety-four, based upon some appropriations and transfers, is seventy-three, one thirty-two.
Okay.
So I kind of, eight fifty-five was the original budget, but they round up to nine fifty, uh, nine twenty-nine.
You're looking at the seventeen budget?
I'm looking at the June two thousand sixteen financial statement. Don't have July.
Speaking of July, do you have any idea when we'll get the updated financials?
At the end of the week. Yeah, there is a, initially, they were waiting to make it, I think, I think we got taken care of.
Well, and the other biggest issue is we're doing training for black mode and ADP, so all of our four employees are immersed in significant training. So we're running a little bit behind.
Yes, lots of training.
Let me find it, I've got that six thirty. The services contractual, um, was that encumbered from last year?
Yes, it was.
Those were encumbrances from last year. So when the council got that list in December, those were things that we had started the process of purchasing that didn't pay for until this year, so that carried over.
So they aren't in last year's expense, that they are in this year's expense?
Yes.
Right.
The twenty-nine thousand.
Okay, so what's that mean for next year's expense?
You mean for eighteen? Unless we encumber something at the end of the year, then it won't have any impact. So only if we encumber something. And we don't do a whole lot of encumbrances. They have to be in process, meaning that you've already got an invoice, but the delivery of the product hasn't been made. So there'll be a couple of those in there. I don't remember which department it's right in. Okay. Next one, uh, engineering, what's that? Yep. Engineering general, um, looks like there's a decrease there. So obviously, we've included the, the group health in there, but there's been another reduction in personal services. I'm thinking that he combined two positions into one. I can't tell you what they are off the top of my head, but he combined a couple of positions. We've got some inspectors that aren't as busy during the winter and I think he's combining, not filling a position. So that's probably where the majority of that money has come from.
Well, there's, I, uh, that's my next question. Planner on, as of June, hadn't had any allocation.
He hasn't, he hasn't moved anybody into that position.
And then electrical inspector was the same thing, so there's two positions.
He's interviewed and I found the right person.
So again, I go back to that question. Is it possible that we can go twelve months without filling that position?
I don't know. If we find the right person, we'll go twelve months without filling it. We need an electrical inspector, but right now.
Who's been doing that in the meanwhile?
Inspector.
Inspector?
Yep. He's qualified, but he's doing both.
And then we're moving urban forestry to which department? Because I was in there from last year or so, I don't know if that's his.
Non-urban.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Non-urban, engineering non-urban.
I got a question back on the city clerk. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared when we, when we got here.
All right.
Uh, the budgeted amounts for, uh, health insurance is sixty-two thousand this year. It was forty-eight thousand, four hundred a year ago. That seems to be a huge jump in that one.
After they do the open enrollment on July the first, I pull up every employee in the department. I look what, see what they signed up for. I use that for the first six months and then for the last six months, I increase by ten percent.
But I mean, somebody must have picked up insurance. Are you sure it's right?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes, because I.
Based on what they signed up?
I believe for everyone. Same thing with the council's insurance. There used to be hardly anyone that takes it, now almost everyone does of insurance. If no one's taking it, then there's not very much expense, but when they hire people that get on the insurance.
But I mean, that's a fourteen, that's a twenty-eight percent increase in that, in that line item.
If you have nobody taking insurance, like.
So I don't think it's forty-eight or sixty-two, but they had that much change in their personnel? But that, that possibly could happen?
Do you have personnel changes or people that came on?
Uh, there was one.
One. And if they change, you know, if they go from single to family, that's a lot of.
But no one that came on was family.
So I just look at what they signed up for and multiply it by six and then increase it by ten percent for the last six months.
I mean, we'll, we'll pull a few samples, but I'll bet it's correct.
That just seemed like a, a big jump or a small depart.
I will double check. We've got another big jump coming up soon. I'll talk to you about that when we get back. I will double check that and make sure it's right.
Anything else, Earl?
Yeah.
Okay. Wait a minute.
Uh, environmental protection, EPA. It's like the majority, there's a small increase in services, the charge is a twelve hundred dollars, but it's going to be group health for professionals or personal services, because there's more of them. So that's all that is. Okay. Okay, fire department. It's up a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Looks like the majority of that is group health, of which, of course, we moved over. Part of that is from pension, so that was three hundred and seven thousand dollars. But we've got some reductions in supplies and services and charges, so the total increase is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. A little 0.96 percent increase. It's group health.
I have got a question.
Councilman Garrison.
Um, I know that if you look at the percentage, it doesn't sound like much, it's almost one percent. But it's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. I was just reminded of the, the report that the, what is it, Terre Haute Competes put together? That's where it's, front page headline, September seventh, report freeze city fire spending one year. And it looks like it's gone up a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, so.
And if we wouldn't move the pension money over, it went down two hundred.
Yeah, that's group health insurance. It goes up for every department.
It doesn't matter what it is. I think that we ought to be able to, to keep that the exact same amount. I mean, quite frankly, that budget is thirteen million dollars. If we can't at least keep it the same, then we're not looking hard enough.
It would be in personnel then, because that's thirteen dollars.
Well, I, I understand. There's, there's other things in there, surely, that you can do that without the threat of a layoff. So my, my comment is.
Actually, there's not, look at the budget.
Sure there is. So my comment is.
Well, show it to me.
Let's, let's get, let's get back to where it was.
Go ahead. The only things left in there really is, you know, utility bills and toilet paper, stuff like that. I mean, when you're looking at that thirteen million dollar budget and our proposed services and charges are a hundred and forty-nine thousand, all the rest of it's all, I mean, if we cut out that, hundred, take a hundred and twenty-seven out of a hundred and forty-nine, we'll, we'll look and see if we can shift a few more things over, but it's, it's just operations. It's just paying the bills. There's nothing else in there.
Well, I would also remind you that the last three years, I think what we heard a couple of weeks ago was the longevity pay totaled four point five million dollars.
I'm not sure where that number's coming from.
And the average going forward every year is two point one million dollars. Two point one million dollars. So again, I think we could take out a hundred and twenty-seven to keep that, hold the line on that expense this year and follow the work of these folks who volunteered their time to study this. I yield.
Nothing else on that one?
Yeah, you don't have to dig into it right now.
I'm sorry, I, I mean, I need to back up to environmental protection. I have three different documents and the departments are of three different orders, so it's hard for me to find.
No need to pause, I can go back.
Sync up my, my notes here. But on the group health insurance.
Mm-hmm.
Fifty thousand dollars budgeted this year, twenty-five thousand, five hundred budgeted last year.
I notice you did hire a new full-time office.
Double.
Right. I look at what they sign up for. We offer it to all employees. If they don't sign up, they don't get it. If they sign up, I go by what they sign up for. I don't.
Could you, I think, we're going, it sounds like we're going to have a lot of questions regarding the insurance and, and that's understandable because every, there's a certain amount in the country that's doing it. But could you give us an explanation of how you guys come up with that figure? Because it seems like there's a lot of areas in all of them.
Yep.
Compared to last year and to this year, because.
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't know about that one person, but twenty-five thousand dollars.
I want lists names, but I can list, like, last year we had eight employees, this year we have ten.
I mean, you can call them trans Michael Dex, I don't care either.
Employee, usually, I realize you have a lot to, to deal with, but, but that's another.
Yeah, if you, if you wouldn't mind giving me a list of the group health you want me to detail, and I'll get you detail for it. Because it takes quite a while.
Okay, I don't have a list yet, but I'll, I'll create one.
Okay.
Well, if I want us to go do them all, we can, but that'll be a lot of work.
It'll take a lot of time.
Well, I mean, if you, at the very beginning of this session, Mary, you had said that our biggest, biggest expense is group health care and we're finding a lot of deficiencies in it, so I think we need to have clarification on that.
I'll do.
Do you yield, Councilman Miller?
I yield, thank you.
On group health, do you bid that out?
Yes.
Yieldly?
Yep.
And we ask for certain bids or?
Yep, that's open, just so they look at our claims and then they make a bid every year.
So, so what was the premium increase? I'm sorry.
Guys, go ahead, go ahead, it's fine.
What was your premium increase or rate increase? Yeah, was it thirteen percent-ish?
Thirteen.
Who owns something?
Who are the way?
Anthem.
Anthem.
We're self-insured. Pat's our consultant that helps us go through the process, but they don't provide the insurance.
Thank you.
Sure.
We had very high claims, unfortunately.
Yeah, I go, sorry.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, um, human relations, um, let's see. Group health, yeah. So, yeah, when Jeff left, he didn't have health insurance, but.
And that's for the family.
We plugged in that because we don't know what position, you know, that's something that we may be able to save on if they hire somebody that doesn't take insurance, but it's pretty unlikely.
Do you know what the status is of filling that position?
They're interviewing, they have given me an update recently. They have an interim director looking at resumes. Can you hire at the same salary that probably we'll see? You know, that's always one of those that's tough, you just don't know for sure that's what salary they have available to them. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine, you're fine. Councilman DeWalt.
I want to jump back real quick, if you don't mind, to fire overtime, five twelve, five hundred. Is that the same that we budgeted for this current year?
Fire overtime.
I don't think. Let's see, hang on a second.
That's on page eight.
Five hundred. I think we, this year's budget is.
Yeah, I, I think it was the same.
Five twelve, five.
And I, I don't know if you know or not, does it seem that we're going to fall within that for this current year?
We're going to be really close, we're going to be right at it. Maybe a little bit lower.
Okay.
And that's because we hired fire through the grant.
Right. All right, I yield, thank you.
Councilman Nation.
A couple of minutes ago, during Councilman Garrison's comments, he pointed out that there's two point one million dollars to, that's budgeted for longevity pay. Uh, Mayor asked and made the remark, they didn't know where that number came from. The four point five is the only number it came from. Excuse me? The four point five million is what was said. Oh, uh, I, I thought I heard two point one.
You did, you're both right. Four point five and two point one every year going forward.
Four point five up until now.
The first three years.
Two point one.
Four point five.
Well, I'm sorry, I, I, okay, go ahead. Anyway, my point is, uh, I see where the two point one came from. Uh, in eighteen for fire department, down the bottom of this page, we're looking at page seven, there's a number for longevity, it's, uh, one million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, forty-three dollars. And then if you jump forward to page, uh, fourteen, the police department, five up from the bottom, is their longevity pay, it's nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Those together equal just over two point one million dollars. Two million, one hundred and three thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. I remember when I was on the council in, I think it was two thousand and fourteen, uh, and we passed the longevity pay, uh, ordinance, um, or a majority of the council passed it, I should say. Uh, and at that time, there was a lot of, uh, contention about what the numbers were really going to be or really were, and there were misrepresentations made about what it was going to cost from year to year. I remember, though, that the council did take a vote and that this is, uh, in our code now, uh, because the council voted on it. If the council decided that we could no longer afford this longevity pay, is it as simple as us just taking the vote and saying, no, we're not going to do that anymore? Now, um, once again, I'm not an attorney, but, um, you would have to suspend collective bargaining to get rid of the contract. We'd have to do away with collective bargaining, because otherwise they would have to vote on a change in the contract. So if the contract expires, it keeps everything that it has in it, so it would have to be renegotiated. I know that the fire contract is, is or was being negotiated. Is that done yet? They have an agreement, but it's not gone through the legal process yet. And how many years will that contract be for? One. And is the police contract coming up soon? Yeah, I think they're done too. They're done too, just not legal, legalized yet. How many years is that contract? I believe that was two, isn't it? Or maybe changing to one. I, you know, I haven't got an update on that, but they're done negotiating. So it sounds like, uh, well, I'm just assuming that, uh, that, uh, these numbers are enshrined in those two contracts, uh, at least the unratified versions of them that have been finished so far. And nothing changed on longevity, same percentage? So, uh, as far as the council having options going forward, um, you know, sometimes we pass legislation that has future dates, uh, for effective use. Uh, what if the council were to pass an ordinance that said that we can't afford this longevity pay anymore, uh, with an effective date of sometime after the contract is expired? Uh, and then that becomes part of what the this administration or the next administration needs to bear in mind as they negotiate the future contract. Well, it's a legal question between the attorney for the contract and firefighters and our attorney who negotiates that to figure out how that could be a fit. I mean, you could do a resolution and just say it, but having teeth to it, it would have to be changed. Right, because the, the, the toothy part that I remember, or the toothy thing that we did, was we passed an ordinance creating it, uh, and, you know, it sounds like it continues to be in force. Well, I'm not sure when you created it. I mean, that, this longevity's been there way before this change. This was just an increase. I guess it's the increase specifically in two thousand and fourteen that I'm talking about. Yeah, you're right, there, there was longevity before that. Um, but there was a, a three-year, three-phase step up. Uh, that, uh, the final step of which was like over one percent, I think I remember. Uh, and that compounds every year, right? So I've got the numbers here for the three years, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen. For the fire department, it's been one point two million dollars over what we paid. That's the additional cost from what we were paying in fourteen. And for the police department, it's nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for the three years. Yep. That's the total new additional cost, so a little over three hundred thousand dollars a year for each one, I believe.
But that is all due to the increase. Some of that is due to each year, each year of service, they get more longevity, up to twenty years and then it's capped at twenty. So if they're at fifteen years, the next year they're going to get more and the next year they're going to get more.
So as we have, what will happen with our department, you know, we've got thirty-some people that are reaching their point of retirement. And when they do, they'll be the ones at the top end of this, it maxes out at twenty years. And then so when it shifts back down, those costs will go down till those people get to their twenty years, the ones we've just hired. So we'll have a period of time where we'll be paying less than we are now. I just know that there's, I've had discussions with some of my fellow council members about, you know, specific line items, what we could do. And although this isn't, uh, a solution right now, um, I do see a multi-step solution going forward that's possible, uh, that would start with council, with the council passing legislation to try to bang that back to, uh, something that we can afford. Um, two point one million dollars more each year, uh, as I've heard Councilman Elliott point out, that's, that's what we're collecting in trash fee now. That's, we've taken four million dollars out of pilot, now that's half of the pilot. I mean, there are all kinds of ways to look at this. Now, I'll stop there, I don't want to get us too far off track here. But, um, I think that there are lots of things to talk about, uh, that the council could do, um, but they just can't all be done at once.
I yield. Councilman Elliott.
Uh, Mayor, I emailed you a while back on whether or not we played pay perf on longevity pay. Did you ever find an answer to that one?
I thought I answered those for you. Pretty sure I did.
Think you did?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go back and, uh.
It seemed like there might have been one thing on there that I didn't, it wasn't perf, but maybe you gave, there were several things you listed, and I think there was one thing I wasn't sure about, but I answered that.
Okay, do you recall what the answer was on that?
But, um, we, anything that goes into their pay would go to perf. So anything you get paid is just, you know, income, then it would be perf.
Okay, and we pay perf at like seventeen percent or something? So it's not only two point one, it's seventeen percent more of that. Seventeen, seventeen percent add-on to that.
For police department.
To cover the perf.
Seventeen percent.
Hmm?
Is that another three hundred fifty thousand?
Another three hundred fifty thousand dollars, yeah, so.
Now we're up to two point five.
Now, back to, uh, human relations, we got group health plugged in at twenty thousand dollars, and we had zero a year ago. With the premiums, twenty thousand dollars?
For family.
For family.
For dental money.
That's the employer portion of a family.
I, I looked at the chart, and that's what, that's...
All the insurance, if they take everything for family, that's what it would cost us.
All insurance, not just health. I thought that was very high as well.
So all means health, medical, health.
Oh, it's, it's a huge expense.
Right.
That's our seventy percent cost of that.
Hmm?
That's our seventy percent cost of that, employee picks up the thirty.
I feel like it's nearly thirty, man. That makes it a catalytic plan under, before we care.
It would probably be a good idea, that.
Hmm?
It's a good plan.
Okay. Same plan for everybody, police and fire?
Yes.
We have one plan.
Well, are you?
PPO and...
Well, we, but we have, we have...
Everyone's on the same plan.
But some of the, the contracts state different percentages that we'll pay and stuff, correct?
There's a couple.
Some of them we pay a hundred percent, correct?
Yeah, one of them has six employees.
Yeah.
You. Anything else on relations, judge, um... Legal department. Looks like they reduced some of their services contractual related stuff, and small increase in probably group health, so it's a reduction of seven thousand dollars there. It's a pretty small budget. Maintenance department, another small budget. It's basically just the operations of city hall, utility bills, contractual services, repairs, salary. So it's a reduction of three hundred dollars, it's basically the same, with an increase, it's got an increase in group health, but we're reducing services and charges. Mayor, mine's got a slight increase, but that'll be reduced, and we had a group health increase there, because somebody changed their plan. But I'll make some other reductions on the services and charges line, we'll get that towards, not... It'll be the same, a reduction, there's probably not much there.
Will the facade grants come out of that, we're sorry, were you paying for the facade grants?
I have a lot of budgets, no, like...
Not out of yours?
Yeah.
Okay, what about launch, Tara Ho, I think we had some confusion.
It's in it, I know it's in it.
Okay.
Yep. Police, so the police budget, you know, the biggest expense is group health, and then moving the, nearly four hundred thousand, I think it was three fifty-three of group health out on the pension side over to here. So at this point, it's the largest single increase, it's primarily due to, it's all, the majority of it's group health, and then we've also got under capital outlay, a lease payment for police cars next year. We've got twenty-four hour day cars, or not shot.
I didn't go through and look at the overall totals, but on the captains, five at fifty-five thousand, plus, it shows a total of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, if you look on, on the budget.
Okay.
So, I mean, my, my total was two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five, and then the lieutenant items, should it be two sixty-seven, five oh five?
Yeah, I don't know if the text, you changed or not.
The text is last year's text.
But the numbers would be based on...
Yes, the current.
They tell us who's gonna get promoted, so we base that budget on...
Right.
Corpsals too, so it's possible that we didn't change the text there.
Yeah, we could take the text out if that would make it easier.
But the salaries, let me double check that.
Okay, and how does that work with, I mean, I'm not familiar with the police contract on promotions of people to lieutenant, and how's that work?
They have testing that they do.
So they just, do they have minimum staffing on how many lieutenants they need to have, or?
Yep, I mean, mayor board's in charge of that, but, you know, they have certain corporal sergeants, lieutenants, and captains that are over certain areas, so we don't have more, you know, you just don't have everybody turn into a captain and have to make captains pay, there's a certain positions, but... Mayor Board process.
Would he set, I didn't look and see, would he use the same amount of sergeants that we had last year, or was there an increase in the number of sergeants and captains?
I don't know, I'm not sure. No, I don't know, didn't ask that question, and we did your budgets.
May I ask any questions, or please?
Okay, so let's see. Wait. Cemetery.
So if we're done with general, I just wanna...
I don't think we are. I don't see council.
It's on the first page.
Skip over it. Somehow I missed that. Oh, I know what I missed, border zoning appeals, if you want, it's a two liner, okay? Yeah, I apologize, I missed that, so, let's go to border zoning appeals, back to page one, the very bottom, I missed those over, it's got four on it, it's kinda hidden in there. So, no change there, basically that's the expenses for...
The board?
The board, and, I think that's it, just the board members. And then council is right after controller for native process, which that's your guy's budget, so.
Basically, it's kept everything the same, except for group health, group health.
Questions?
How many council on group health?
Show the number that is.
I'm thinking eight, but I'm not positive.
I know, I'm not.
I'm not. So that'd be six. Okay, so six, seven, that'd be seven. Nine minus two, seven.
Yep.
On group health.
About twelve thousand. About twelve thousand, you're, approximately.
It depends, there may be some that are family, some that are spouts in that, but I think it's the same amount of council members that were on it last year, that will be on it this year.
Oh, I, I just, a comment, I know that, that my portion of it went up, I won babies. I have one other question on police, you had two corporal, that's forty-eight, two thirty-two, but it's only one.
Yeah, I'm gonna guess there's just one corporal.
Okay.
So I think we just didn't change that tax there.
Okay, I, that's what changed it, but it was like...
No, because they're the ones that put the budget.
The amounts are correct, the tax follows over from last year.
We'll go back through and clean that.
I can clean that up.
All right. And then, I believe we're done with general, but the question I have is, where are we gonna put, for the property taxing impact, are we gonna leave that zero, or are we gonna...
No, we've already put it in the gateway, so.
What's that, what's that amount?
Well, it's...
I know you sent the email, the figures that you sent out to the...
Yes.
Okay.
Those are the, the amounts for these, I don't have those with me, I'll try, I can resend them if you need it.
Okay.
Councilman Elliott.
Going back to the council, on the services and charges in the capital outlay, there's five thousand deduction and a twenty thousand deduction, I'm just wondering what those two are.
Remind me of that myself, I know you've not worked on that.
I think, and Mr., Councilman Elliott may understand this, while I'm laughing a little, the originally introduced budget in two thousand and sixteen for two thousand and seventeen had, I believe, twenty thousand dollars in contractual services, and then it was reduced at passage, but if the comparison is based off the originally introduced budget, that's why you're seeing all these strange numbers.
Would that been because of the cameras?
No, 'cause clerk and IT paid for that.
But I, I know, but didn't we originally put it in the council's budget, and then they said take it out, that they would cover it?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah. At the time, I think that was just...
Because I know at one point in time, we were putting it in our budget, and then somebody said, no, we could cover it under...
We paid for it under CCD and clerk's budget.
And, and I did want to point out, the clerk did income for money for twenty-six, from two thousand and sixteen until two thousand and seventeen, so you will see that if you look at our expenditures, but it was to pay for the recording system.
Ayo. This may have already been asked, of the increase, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand in the budget, we're hearing, you know, that the majority looks like it's gonna be group health. Will you have a figure of what the total group health increase was?
I can do that, yes.
That will show pretty much here of the eight hundred and fifty-six, how much was really, of that was the group health?
Yep.
Which is something pretty much out of our control.
Right.
But then I would also add to that, just as a little caveat, the fire pension and police pension group health, that we're moving over from the pension to the general fund.
Okay.
Cause those are three big...
If we can get that...
Right, I can put that in there too.
That would be appreciated.
Sure.
Thank you. Ayo.
To go back to that gateway number for the property taxing impact, we're not gonna have any issues like we did this year, having to revisit it, because last year, we put the right number in.
That's right, make sure you say that correctly, because I've been hearing people say we put the wrong number in.
I know, I, I defended you on that, so.
I know, I heard the tape.
So, we reduced that, we put the number in that that we were supposed to, and then they came back and reduced it, or we don't have issues doing that, issue?
No, because when we do the seventeen eighty-two notice changes for this year, when we make these four million dollars-ish of reallocation, and we do that redevelopment loan, we will have, our budget will be positive at the end of the year, so they will approve the budget. That's why, whenever I say it's all on paper, that's how this stuff works, you can work with the system, that's not what we're doing, our only solution this year is to do that, because we can't come up with eight billion dollars to make it go away in one year. So they will approve our budget based on how we end the year, and then what that revenue versus expenses are for eighteen. And that's what they did for this year.
So will the two thousand and eighteen budget forms include the tax cap amounts in expenses like they did last?
Yes.
I mean, we don't, we didn't have them here, probably, because we got them so early, you didn't have them.
Right.
We had to put this in early, and that's what Paige didn't have everything for my seat, or, because she was working on her things, there's a couple of things that didn't want to have timelines.
But I think I emailed you about that, and you told me yes, and I think you told me you had them out.
We've already ended them, I mean, they're in gateway right now, they're already on there.
Thank you.
Okay, so cemetery, two big changes here are health, and the services and charges, I know there are two things in there that we had to increase that, it doesn't mean we're gonna do them yet, but we're gonna have to, we need to put a new roof on the chapel, I guess you would call that out of Hyrum Arm, the lit roof is leaking, and heating and cooling system in there. And so they've increased this budget line item to be able to do repairs through service contracts, to get the roof replaced, fixed, we don't have, I don't think it's a total replacement, it's a tile roof, but it's repairs, and it's repair to the heating and cooling system, because it's, once we get the drainage issue fixed, and then fix that, so that's why we have an increase there.
Council.
Okay, CCD, it's like we increased services and charges, and reduced capital outlay, I mean, it's, it's pretty good material change here, once again, this fund has a healthy balance, and so, we will be putting some, some things against that this year, against that cash balance, and we may do that again next year, to deal with our general fund deficit, so this is kind of a, not much of a change at all, we don't pay any salaries or anything in there, it's all services contractual, purchase of items, like computers, and things, this is one place where we pull money out for the equipment in here.
What kind of, do you have any, kind of go back to edit, how do you have a five-year plan on that, do you have?
No, because this is such a small amount, we only take in about four hundred some thousand dollars a year of revenue, so it's small items, and it's just as it comes, and we have to replace things, and so, usually Brad will plug something in there for computers, every once in a while, we'll have a vehicle, it's, it's, it's small dollars, and so we, we really can't put a plan together for, because we don't use this for everybody's benefit, we make them put it in their own budget, this is more of a, a place for us to do things here at city hall, or parking lot, and we'll pay for some of the parking lot improvements here in the future, because there just isn't much there, we don't take in much revenue. Pretty small budget.
Council.
CCI, even smaller budget, that cigarette tax money, and we use that primarily for tree maintenance, tree removal, tree trimming, whatever, that's all that's used for all tree maintenance related items.
Council.
Okay, edit, um, see. We reduce services contractual, other services and charges just by a little bit, increase capital outlay. Let's see here. We got, we moved some expense here for a lease. I don't have a note on that right this second, I apologize, my mind is drawing a blank on what that is right this second.
On the hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Well, yeah, plus the fourteen in interest on that note. Boy, I apologize.
Must be nice to be able to spend that much money and not know what you're gonna do with it.
No, we, 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 we got it in our planning, I just, off the top of my head, I cannot remember what that is, I apologize, I'll find that out. I'm sorry, for what? The principal and interest on the hundred and thirty and the fourteen thousand there at the end.
Okay, services contractual went up three hundred thousand?
We built a little bit of a, as I mentioned, I responded to your email saying that, there's a couple of places we're gonna have to pay for, the nine one one contract, if we don't get, you know, so I, I just don't know what that's gonna shake out quite yet, I don't know if I can lower it yet or not, but I'll let you know next month, that we were gonna have to pay for nine one one if we don't get public safety, or, and homeless better. At this point, I don't want to change that, we have here immediate closure errors, please, you know, from a political perspective, we don't want to take that out of the budget right this minute, maybe we do at the end of October for some of that, so what's the political perspective? We are working on some things, that's all I can tell you right now, we'll see, we're working on a plan, the project is not completely dead, so, I'll let you know more, because something will happen by the end of October, so we'll know when it's time to vote on this, and maybe we can reduce it some, or change it, and maybe we'll get flexibility there.
Okay, thank you.
What about government relations, with the hundred thousand dollars? I always go back to the casino, going up to Indianapolis and seeing the battle that we had with other lobbyists and so forth, so I assume that's what that's for?
Well, we, we have a retainer with Faber BD who does lobbying for us now, but in that particular case, there was no way you would compete, I mean, I, we don't budget for a special project like that, and they hired all the consultant, all the lobbyists that had anything to do with gaming, so nobody... that had anything to do with gaming, so nobody could access any, you can't fight that battle.
So we, did we use all, I mean, my computer's dying, but did we use all that last year with government relations?
I'm sure we did.
And, oh, you said they're on retainer at the, the state or the national level?
Kind of both, you know, they do some state stuff for us, but mostly at the national level, kind of varies from year to year. So as an example, I mean, the Tarot Competes, our portion of that comes out of this, as one example for this year.
All right, and to go back to Councilman Garrison's question earlier with Launch Tarot Hope, where's that at on here?
That is under business development.
Okay, and have we paid that for this year?
No, not yet.
Okay, when do we plan on paying that?
Well, I have, I didn't make a commitment to them directly, I just told them that we would see what we could do by the end of this year.
Okay.
So if we do something, which I think we'll do something, it'll be in December.
Okay, so if we budget that, does that mean we're going to give them something next year?
Well, this business development can be a variety of things, that's just one commitment that I made, I want to give them something, yes.
Okay.
I want to support them.
Counselwoman, all.
How much did we, did we contribute to the Tarot Competes? Do we know?
Well, we've not been billed, but it comes out of our existing contract, so we won't have any additional costs, it comes out of what we're already paying those guys.
That's why, how much do we pay them?
Well, I don't know, what's the everyday spending, I'm not sure, um, we've probably paid them, let's see, it looks like we've paid 32,000 this year for all the work they do for us, which includes that, this was through into August, so.
So who, who did we pay on that, I'm sorry?
Fabry BD.
Okay.
They do a variety of things for us, they just included that portion in there, so we wouldn't have to pay above and beyond.
I am.
Thanks, I didn't, we couldn't, so 32,000 this year.
Do you have any questions?
We're on edit still, right?
Councilman Nation.
Yeah, I, I, maybe I'm not supposed to do this, but I jumped forward into the budget form two, and I'm looking at the edit form for that, edit shows a projected revenue of just over $5 million for 2018, and, you know, we're looking at the proposed expenses, you've got 4.175, so it's roughly a million dollar difference. Can you talk about that?
Sure. You ready? Yeah, you know, this is our edit plan, and so we put in the projects that we want to do, they don't always happen, or some other projects may be more expensive, because once we put it out to bid, things go up, and so we always stay within the framework of the budget, we've also got a cash balance there, and so, um, this is a little bit different than redevelopment, we won't get into that this evening, but, you know, they kind of put everything in there, if I did it the way they do it, man, we'd put 10 or 20 million dollars worth of stuff on the list, knowing you can't do it every year, but these are just the things that we're going for, these are the things that we want to do, you know, we have other things on our list that we'll put on next year, and the following year, and the following year, so this is our edit budget, this is our edit plan, as the state requires for that year, if we change anything in it, then we need to change the plan. But we've got a cash balance, and I, I know at the end of this year, even when we move some expenses over because of the 1782 notice, we'll still have well over $2 million cash balance in there, and we usually keep three, three and a half.
Okay, thanks.
So we've got room to work if costs go up on us, I guess is, is the bottom line.
Do we get protection from Umball, what we kind of do on property taxes on, if that amount we get in edit is going to be reduced or not? So I heard that somewhere through the county, that they said that we're going to lose, they were going to lose 3% in edit, do you guys get?
I've not heard that, Paige does those calculations, so I don't.
I'll check with her.
Yeah, I've not heard that.
She used 4,861.
That 5 million sounded high, I was thinking it was four something, I couldn't quote the number.
4,861 versus 4,800.
And I think she budgeted this year 4.9 for revenue.
It's in the Form Two.
4,900 for this year.
So let's check on that Form Two, because I don't know what that couple hundred thousand is going to sound like. I don't know if she carries, I don't know, you know, we get reimbursed for some things, and that always kind of throws things off a little bit, because in a, in a given year, we may spend money, like on Margaret Avenue, and then we get revenue the next year, it looks like revenue, but it's really not, because we get reimbursed at 80%, and so I don't know if she's included that, because we keep getting that every year, as revenue or not, I need to ask that question.
We'll look at that question.
Because I think there will be more like 4.9.
Okay, thank you.
And I know we had reduced the facade grants, it looks like it was increased, the number's increased, I'm going to leave that at that level, do we have any potential through this?
Just based on feedback from redevelopment, that, you know, we already know one's fallen through that was supposed to happen, so, for this year, so we're not going to spend $40,000 that we planned on this year.
And some of these projects have been carried over from year to year, do you have certain, are you definite, are we going to do Lafayette, are we going to do First and Holman?
Well, absolutely, but thing, there's, but things change, and when they fall on here, they may just be like for Lafayette Avenue, we've had it on there for probably three years, but it's been property acquisition and design work, and so each year, we do that portion, and take the next step, the next step, but the funding is in place, if we can get through the legal stuff by December, then we'll go to bid in the spring, and construction will start next year.
Okay.
As an example, on First Street, we're still dealing with Indiana Railroad, we have an issue with them on the railroad crossing for First Street, and we've not that, got that resolved yet, we've been working on it for about a year and a half.
And 13th and 8th Avenue?
That is just design and work that will start at some point here, preliminary design, but that's way out there.
Okay.
So that'll show up on here probably for the next 10 to 20 years.
Okay.
Um, let's see, EMS non-reverting. Looks like we increased the budget by about 50,000, but we moved some expenses over from the general fund that are related to EMS, and then capital outlays reduced, because our lease payments for next year will be smaller, and it'll go back up to about 800,000 in 2019.
What are some of the services contractual for EMS?
Anything related to, they're all EMS related, repair of equipment, service contracts we have on air bottles, things like that, yeah, that's true.
I didn't hear you last time, sorry.
Billing, AccuMed, probably the biggest single expense in there, um, we also have.
We can't do that in-house?
Oh, absolutely not, we did it one time, for the cost of this, you know, we'd have to hire probably five or six staff to do it, and they take all the liability, so if anything's misbilled, Medicaid, Medicare, insurance, we're not on the hook from a liability perspective.
We're going to be waiting two or three years to get some Medicaid reimbursements like we've had the past couple of years.
No, but that's a law change, I mean, we're right on that, so we, we've generated some, we're right, every year, we get another piece of that, based on that law change, municipal power departments can start billing.
And the laws change every year, and the AccuMed, they stay current with all the active laws, we have to send our people to training continually to keep them current this way, but these people are already trained.
It's, it's the only way to go, there'd be no reason to bring that in-house.
And then the principle on the note is to purchase any new equipment, or just continuous bond payments, or payments on equipment?
I gave you that schedule last week, Councilman, so it's, it's existing, because we won't have any bond payments due on the next pieces of equipment until 2019, so that's why it'll go back up probably to 700,000 or so, we target 750 usually out of this budget for lease payments, this is, this year is a kind of a, we had a cycle where it went down.
Councilman Nation.
Looking at the Form Two for EMS, it shows that you're projecting that we're going to collect over $700,000 more next year than we did this year, can you talk about that, please?
It's just that Medicaid, it's, actual billing is up, and we're projecting billing to be up a little bit, but it's that additional Medicaid reimbursement, but it may come in this year, so we may have to adjust that, we may have more revenues than what we planned this year and less next year, depending on when it hits.
Okay, so I remember we had a similar situation last year.
It was supposed to come in November, and it came in February or something, but, so I don't know when it's going to hit. Okay, engineering, non-reverting, basically, it's just moving the salary over here, and then we've got some capital outlay, and I believe, that is a vehicle they need to purchase, they've had, they've had several issues with vehicles, they've got some really old stock, we totaled a couple this year, and one, one of our people hit a deer, and then somebody hit us, and so they need to replace the vehicle next year.
Counsel.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
Similar vein, looking forward to Budget Form Two, projecting $180,000 plus additional revenue over last year, and engineering, non-reverting, where's that coming from?
I think the majority of that is probably, it's between redevelopment projects, or wastewater projects, and I don't remember the breakdown, or where they go and, what they do is they go and talk to those two areas specifically about what projects they're going to do, and then we try to calculate how many months of actual inspection there is.
So that's from additional work that the city's doing for?
Like, we do the inspection versus hiring an outside consultant.
Right, okay, thanks, Ian. Next.
Fire, that says non-reverting, it's contractual services, page, can't say page one, but should be right after, non-reverting, this is contractual services, where we go out and do, there's two primary sources of income here really, the two biggest is contracts we have, like the IU, and then when we go out and do individual contracts with IU again, and Rose Holman of the high schools, where we provide an ambulance, and they pay us for that service, and so, when it, the, the fees that we pay out of here for professional services, are being covered by what we charge them, and so we don't run those expenses through the general fund budget or the EMS budget, it's run through here, because it's paid for and covered by the contractual services. So there's a little bit of an increase there, $400,000, I'm sure it's some kind of.
So the purchase of equipment for 100,000, what would that be?
That would be something related to the, anything for the department, so it's probably smaller type equipment, like, it could be ladders, it could be tools, you know, jaws of life, those kind of things, things that don't fit into the EMS budget per se, the more fire related, that's what we pay for out of here, other kinds of equipment that isn't strictly EMS.
Who else?
It's not a big budget, as you can see.
Next.
Fire pension. It's got a decrease in it, it's just because we're moving the group health from the medical surgical and then a lot of the pension fund into the fire department, but.
Counsel. Next.
Fire Training Academy, it is basically the same budget, actually shows a dollar, I don't know why, but something changed, somebody rounded something a little bit differently, so it's the same expenses as related to supplies and utility bills and equipment that's needed up there, the training related on that.
Thanks.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
I'm skipping forward to Form Two again, and I see that we budgeted zero in revenues for the last six months of 2017 for the Fire Training Academy, and we have zero budgeted for audit next year, so that would be profit center really isn't making any money at all, right?
Well, we transfer money, we, we get a little minor revenue from some use of that facility, but as you remember, we transfer money from the EMS fund, to cover the expenses in Training Academy for audits, so that's the revenue.
Remind me what that is, is that 5%?
I believe it is 5%, if we need all of that, because some years, we haven't needed all of 5%, but that's what we're allowed to move over, we move over what we need, they do it two or three times a year, bring it to the council.
Thanks.
Next.
City Hazmat, it's the same, small budget, $40 budget.
Counsel. Next.
Holman Links, we're showing an increase here, you know, that's an increase. It's like we've got an increase in group health, and then reduced capital outlay, so there's a small reduction there.
Councilman DeBach.
Do you have an update on Holman Links, as to your, your future plans with it?
Not yet, we, we got, we got, we had four responses, as I mentioned in the last council meeting, we have one that looks favorable to have a conversation with, but that's all at this point.
Do you have an idea, maybe an estimate as when, maybe you'll have some more information?
This fall, because they would need enough, we'd have to make the decision enough times for somebody to come in and do that.
Okay.
But it's got to be a situation where we're not paying out a stipend that equals what we're already paying, or, you know what I mean, from all part of that, so that's what we have to negotiate and work through.
Okay, thank you.
Ayo. To go back onto that, with all due respect, Mary, you've been telling us that any day now, we'll get an update on the parks, I, I don't understand what the delay is on that.
It's trying to get them to finish it up.
Okay, finish.
So, it's, it's not, it's a priority, but it's not the highest priority with all these other things that are going on, and Fabry has been handling that for us through our existing contract, and they sent me some additional follow-up questions last week, so we're trying to nail something down.
I mean, you have, kind of like what we did with the police pensioners, we kind of said, hey, this is the date, I mean, are you going to get a firm date, I think we need to fix it, kill a cure kind of thing, I mean, are we going to have a eventual date? I mean, it's like the whole golf season's gone through without us figuring out what we're going to do with that.
Well, it's not something you do in a month or two, obviously, it was a pretty drawn-out process, I've done very professionally, following all of these statutes, to do something like this, in order to award it at the end, you've got to follow a lot of red tape, and so we've done all that, whether we can negotiate a contract to take to the park board yet, I don't know, I don't know if it's going to be good enough, I don't know.
What is the park board's, what are the thoughts on doing this?
It's mixed, some thinks it's a great idea, and some thinks it's a terrible idea.
Okay, so what if?
It depends who you ask.
What if the park board rejects the, you know, the bids and stuff, what, what is the thoughts moving forward on the golf courses? Especially Holman Links, with Rose Holman just purchasing all that property there, and this stuff's up to that, and we had discussions with the university to see if maybe they want to do something with it?
It's not our choice, if we close the golf course, it goes back to the Holman family, so they can then sell it, or give whatever they would want with it.
Yeah, you understand my timing on that, though, I think that'd be kind of a perfect, maybe, conversation.
Could be, maybe, but it wouldn't be up to us, we wouldn't have any say-so in that.
Could. Councilman Nation.
Couldn't Rose Holman theoretically respond to your RFP and enter into an agreement with the city, like these private management?
They could, they didn't, but they could, and maybe they haven't even thought about golf courses, I'm not sure.
Well, when I think about the timing of these steps, we're talking about, you know, we did the study and the RFP and all that before the. we did the study and the RFP and all that before the Holman family deal came out. And I hadn't thought of that until right now, but that seems like a logical conversation to try to have. I guess they'd approach us if they were really interested, though.
I would think that. You know, they haven't closed on that other property yet. If they will, I mean, they're just in the process of closing and all that. And the Holmans are selling a lot of their properties, so I'm sure if we close the golf course, they would take that property back and sell it.
Market it.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that we sell it to Rose. I'm suggesting that we offer them the same thing that we're offering the private sector in terms of a management contract. Just on the theory that maybe they want to expand the golf program.
I agree. But once again, if we don't do a golf course, it goes back to the family and we lose complete control of it. We won't make a penny off of it and we don't have any say-so in that.
Well, we're not making any money off of it now, so.
Right. And once again, if you think back, it's only because of the property tax caps. Because before, we were collecting one point three million dollars more in property taxes for the Parks Department that covered all that. And once we lost the property tax cap dollars for the parks, that's outside of the general fund, they can't cover those losses.
I know that's been said in the past, that, you know, government shouldn't be subsidizing golf courses. So that's a different conversation.
Uh huh.
Next.
So Ray Park, it's very similar, small reduction.
Constable nation.
Sticking forward to the Budget Form Two, I see that you're projecting a thirty-one thousand dollar increase in receipts from Ray Park. Can you talk about where that number comes from?
Just based on projections. So I don't have the detail. I didn't get into that. It comes from, you know, the Parks Department when they put the budget together and then Paige takes a look at that and just based on their thoughts. So I don't know. I think some years we met those goals and some years we haven't.
Well, I noticed that Holman Links didn't project any increase. It's just two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the last six months of this year and a half a million. Nice round number for next year on miscellaneous revenue projected. But these numbers are, what, projected for, yeah, up ahead of that for next year, for Ray Park specifically.
I can ask that question. I don't remember that, having that conversation where they told me how they came up with that. But some years they lowered, some years they raised.
Thanks, Daniel.
I have a question. What was the process with department heads submitting budgets and the conversations that you guys have afterwards? Do you bring it back in and have them kind of defend their budget or state their case?
We do that, we do that in one session. It may take a couple hours. So we do zero-based budgeting. We make them go through every line item with us, defend it. We look at last year's spending, we look at this year's spending, and we calculate that out. And then if anything's different, they got to defend it.
Okay. So basically, when they submit a budget, do they see the end budget end result or are they done once they turn it in?
They're pretty much done when they turn it in, because we don't usually make a whole lot of changes. There's a few. There may be some surprises to some, especially on a capital purchase or services contractual or something.
Okay.
But most of the rest of it's all the same, staffing, all that. We don't change any of that.
So if somebody, say, submits that they needed, you know, you mentioned Chuck needed more vehicles, there's no, hey, you need to explain to me why you need vehicles, how does that work?
Oh, yeah. No, they tell us exactly why, yeah. We just don't take it out unless the budgets aren't working, you know what I mean? Because it's not fundable. We have very few capital throughout our budget, very little.
Next.
Looks like local road and street LRS.
Where's the status of filling Brad's spot?
I've got applications in, getting ready to start the interview process, but we have operators flying.
So again, going back, if we're doing fine with twelve months, why do we need to twelve months?
He just left in June.
Six months.
Okay.
Three months.
Got to find the right person.
I know.
You know, just stick somebody in there.
Okay. And then with this last winter, we had a mild winter, so it looked like we didn't need to use a lot of salt. And what was that? We got to down sand or whatever was the other?
Calcium chloride, three things we bought.
So did we purchase stuff and then just not use it? How do we...
We used a little bit. I think we put stuff down three times last year, but not much.
Okay.
Not much. We've actually had two fairly mild winters. One before, had a few more, but it's an assault dome down there. And we are going to have to replace that salt dome roof at some point. We're working on some proposals now, but it's not the budget. I'm just telling you that because it's starting to leak and we don't want to lose that calcium chloride and that salt during...
And then services contractual with Buffalo Road and Street, where's that?
Hiring those people to do work, asphalt, ST, things that are road-related, curb work, things like that. So obviously, we increased this, once again, as back to the beginning, because we've got a significant increase in income. Well, we're supposed to. And here's what I can tell you. The state, there's always something going on. In August, we're supposed to get our first distribution. So normally, we get about how much?
Hundred and ninety.
Okay, we got seventy, forty. Because the way they wrote the law is, they get to take money from all of us for the first two months until they get their fund built up. And then we'll start getting our increase after that. So this month in September, when we get a chance to look at what we got, it should be more than we got last month, but it's less, we're going to skip the last month of what we would normally get. So we're going to lose money for the first two months that they didn't tell anybody about. So I'm just caveat just to let you know that I was very disappointed in that. But that's the way the legislature wrote the law and that's what the state did. They get to capture their money to build up their fund first.
Is this, would we use our, this money for the Indiana Crossing Grant application?
We can use some of this, we can use Edit, and we can use MVH.
Okay. When are they supposed to award?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
And then there'll be another process next year at some point, probably mid-summer. So we'll find out tomorrow if we're, we were funded.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah, there was a lot of submissions. It was about a hundred communities that didn't submit anything last time. I think, I don't know how they said this, it went next this time.
Yeah. I mean, it's a good, it's a good program. I mean, do you have a, I know we'd asked Chuck and he did provide to us a grading system on our roads and so forth. But I always get asked people from my constituents, how we decide which roads get paved and worked on. I think we could all agree Seventh Street was a great project, whether you live in the north end or the south end. That was a road that definitely needed to be worked on. But do you have any, you know, plans on what you're going to pave this coming year?
We have another section of Seventh Street to do. It'll take up the majority of it. But, you know, when you look at, between Edit, MVH, and LRS, we're probably going to have an extra five, six hundred thousand dollars, let alone if we get community crossings. So we're going to have more money anyway that we also have to leverage and have that money available until we at least go through the community crossings process. Because you have to be able to show in the budget that you've got a match in the budget.
Do you think you can let the council know if we were awarding any of our grants?
Yeah, I think there'll be a big state announcement tomorrow. They're doing it in Jasper and it'll, it should hit all the media and they'll be happy to tell you what we find out. The governor's doing a big rollout.
Constable nation.
Can you remind us what section of Seventh Street is slated for reconstruction next year?
It'll be south of Holman, so...
Well, now it's south, the southern border of what's being done is Washington.
Right. And that section was done when Holman Street was done, from Holman up to Washington.
From Holman up to Washington, okay.
And then just a little bit south of Holman, we'll pick it up and take it down to about Helen, where they came up from Margaret Avenue.
So that takes it down to...
Seven Street will be done, south of Poplar.
Okay, so that takes it to the edge of the, of the Margaret Avenue.
Yes, where it came up north several blocks, two blocks, I think.
Okay. And I've been watching the Seventh Street project go back in. I haven't seen a design for it, so I don't know if there are bike trails, lanes, paint on the pavement. What about trees in the tree row? Is that...
It's not part of the project, but that's something that a lot of times we come back and follow up with and do something with trees, then planting trees in there would probably be a perfect project for next fall, year from this fall.
Yeah, it seems like a, if there's not money in the budget for it specifically...
Yeah, we didn't do that. They just have to restore and plant grass, but we didn't put any trees or bushes or anything like that in there.
Okay, thanks, Daniel.
Well, one of the things I noticed about the Seventh Street project, it was a lot of people in the neighborhood were fixing up their houses and it's kind of like a domino effect where people feel like they have nice roads, they're going to fix the house up too.
Well, some of that happened up in the redevelopment area up north, too. You know, some did, some didn't. But you hope that that has an effect.
Next.
Okay.
Next.
MVH. We had to make some changes here a little bit, only because, once again, fifty percent of what we take in in MVH now has to be spent on roads. We've been spending about eighty percent of our income on operations and twenty percent on roads because we use Edit to do our paving. So we've had to shift some things to, and we're going to have to probably put some property tax dollars in here, again, to cover our expenses for our staff, so we stay under that fifty percent threshold. So we're really showing the major increase here, though, just because of services and charges for asphalt. Work that we're going to do, once again, two or three different vendors that do curb work and asphalt work, road repairs for us. So that's why the increase is there, but it's supported with the revenues.
So are we set up to be compliant with that? I know they had sent a memo out saying that they were going to give a little leeway, but...
For this year only.
Yeah, so.
We'll be compliant.
Compliant.
Yep.
Just real quick, sorry, Mayor, I missed the first part of what you said. It's going to be fifty percent will be used on roads for 2018, that's when that starts. What was it for 17?
There was no requirement, really. The law says it started in 17, but the State Board of Accounts said there's no way to administer that in six months. There's no way that cities and towns could react to that or counties.
Sure.
Because you're already paying. You know, you already, there's no way you can just stop halfway through the year, quit paying your employees.
Right, okay.
And find another fund. So they will begin enforcement January first. So when they, whenever we get our 2018 audit, that's when they'll check it. So this, once again, this, this increase is just going to roads and streets. And when you add that revenue on top, we have to find that fifty-fifty balance.
Questions?
Parks slight increase, and it looks like it's all group health related. We didn't add any staff, so it's probably, it's all red. And once again, we'll run these numbers for every department. We'll leave you guys. So that way, we'll double check them again, but we'll make sure that you all know exactly how much those are for everybody. We'll probably try to do some cuts here, too, though, because we're going to have parks in the black at the end of this year, for the first time in three years. And so we want to maintain that as we move forward. We'll have, our goal is to have all of our funds operating in the, in the black next year, but three or four that we have that weren't negative.
Are we not going to do, are we not going to do a Fourth of July fireworks show this year? I know that's the original issue.
We move that to Edit. As a service that's contractual. We paid for half of it out there this year. We had it in the budget.
Next.
A little bit lost. Was that Parks non-inverting or Parks?
Parks general.
Parks general.
We have, and then Parks non-inverting.
Again, I'm looking at the Form Two for Parks, and it looks like we're projecting sixty-eight thousand dollars in parking recreation receipts, additional for 2018, and a total of seventy-five thousand dollars of additional revenue from Parks in 2018. Can you talk about what influences those numbers?
Based on what potential growth they would think they have. I know, you know, we've, we've been increasing our revenues with the festival that we have in May. We turned the corner with Rib Fest to positive. You know, once again, they just sit down and go through that with the trending and put together what they believe they can do. So there's a variety of things that we get revenues from, you know, the Collar Park event, and some of them are kind of small, but they've been increasing some of the fees and doing some things. You know, I, it's a significant increase. It's only a four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar total revenue, and we're saying we're going to get, of that four sixty-one, seventy-five thousand is new. I'll ask for some specifics. I don't...
Okay, thanks, Daniel.
We did that three months ago and I apologize, I just don't remember how they came up with that increase. Okay, let's see. Next is Parks non-inverting. It's pretty much just left at the same, but we may tap into this this year for some additional parks expenses. So we'll just see how this plays out. But right now, it's the same budget. It's used for a variety of things, parks related, until eventually it's gone.
Next.
Police pension, reduction is moving the group health and medical surgical home dental out of there into the police general fund budget. That's why the general fund budget went up there so much, was one of the big pieces of it.
Can you explain a little bit about, I had a couple calls regarding a police pension that was used to take trips and so forth? Where is that?
Totally different fund.
Okay.
It's administered by the pension secretary. It's funds that the state gave them a long time ago. I told them they could use it for that purpose and has nothing to do with this.
Okay.
State Board of Accounts looks at it every year, but we don't have it. This isn't part of what we do. It's administered by the pension secretary.
Next.
Who is the pension secretary? Aaron Madermelt.
Who?
Aaron Madermelt.
For police.
For police. And then fire is...
Intemten.
Intemten, yeah. And there's a board that oversees that, but there's a secretary that we actually, by ordinance and by the statute, I believe, have to pay to do that job. So it changes periodically every few years. Somebody different will do it. But he is the current one. Okay, transit, or transportation is what the state calls it. Healthcare costs, some capital outlays for a bus match. I'm not sure about the supply line up. You see that hundred thousand dollar increase in there? I don't believe that's a good number. I think it's less than that. And with the transition to Debbie Hensley taking over there, we've not had a chance to review that with her. So my guess is we're going to make a reduction here.
A reduction in what?
Supplies.
Yeah, gasoline and diesel fuel.
I can't explain it right now.
Okay. Unless we're going to drive faster and lower our gas mileage to improve our own time.
I think it's, I think it's a mistake in the transition between people, is what I think happened. We'll figure that out. But we'd already submitted it, so I can't change it until we do official change to it.
All right.
Right. I don't believe that number is correct.
Mr. President.
Constable nation.
There are opportunities in transit for doing better in communicating where the buses go, when they come. There are opportunities in Transit for doing better in communicating where the buses go, when they come. You know, I've talked to people who try to use the bus service and hear a lot of frustration with, you know, where, where do I stand, when does it come, how do I do it? I'm not saying that it's a hundred-thousand dollars worth of frustration, but I hope that the opportunity with a new person at the helm, I hope that that brings maybe a different approach to communicating how to use the bus to the community. I use public transportation everywhere I go, where I travel domestically and internationally, and in my opinion, we do an awful job of making it clear to people who don't know how to use the bus, how to do it. I saw an article in the newspaper recently about some kind of outreach effort, which seemed like a good idea, seemed like a good start, so it sounds like we're trying to do some things differently, but there's lots of room for improvement there.
How do people know our bus routes? Do we put on, online? What are some of our avenues to let people know our bus route?
Well.
Cause that is a good point.
Cause the routes don't change, I mean, they're kind of what, what they are. I guess if you're new to the community, you may struggle with that, but yes, it's online. There's handout cards that you can get.
On our city web, on our city website?
They can get, and you know, they run on a regular schedule, and so I, you know, everyone's willing to get a complaint, but not a lot. You know, we've got GPS units in all those buses, so we do check to make sure they're following the routes, and you know, sometimes you run a little bit behind trains and accidents and things happen. But I don't get many complaints like that, so I appreciate that. I just, I, they don't make it to miles, they may be stopping there, but I don't get many complaints about not being able to hit that bus cycle. Most of the people who use it are using it to get to work or school. That's kind of the two big ones, and they figure it out and they're waiting. So yeah, we'll take a look at that. I, just not an area that I've had any pushback on, so I'll be happy to see what Debbie can take a look at that and kind of.
I went to Bloomington, they have an app where you can tell where the bus is at with the GPS and when they'll be there. I mean, we are behind the times when it comes to that, exactly.
Well, if you, well, if you want to talk about Bloomington, you know, even just like the person on the street, the signs that are there are not crystal clear, but a lot clearer than anything I've ever seen in town. In terms of what route you're on, what kind of service you can expect, where you should be, when, you know, they're getting all that.
Well, and from a funding perspective, Bloomington is way ahead of a lot of people because they have a taxing entity, so they, all the taxpayers pay for the bus service down there, the whole county, and so they've got huge revenues coming in versus our federal piece. So they can do a lot more because they're a taxing entity, like the airport or the library.
I think we're in the bus system, we need to be all in or not do it. I think a lot of people feel, I agree with Cosman Nation, that we have a lot of work to do to improve our ridership, but how are our numbers compared to?
They continue, they went down last year, but then they're back up, it looks like this year a little bit. I mean, it, you know, it varies depending on people's, whether they can afford a car or not sometimes. But our ridership continues. I mean, overall, it's trending up, it just kind of had a dip for a year.
Are we able to look at the demographics, college students, elderly, do we break it down that, I mean, do we have?
They do an annual required and we, and we do it, they have a meeting, and we bring in a variety of sources who refer to us, and we get some of that data, because we have to report it to the feds, but we don't do any target marketing or anything like that, so we don't have any funds to do that.
One more question about that. Can we still have the agreement with ISU?
Yes.
So.
And IB Tech, we have two agreements.
All right, so students of those institutions can take, are already paying to take the bus for free if they want to.
Yeah, ISU pays for half of that, then we get reimbursement, the feds and the state for the other half, so that doesn't cost us anything per se. It's covered, same thing with the IB Tech route.
Yeah, well, that, that's another part of, you know, since ISU's in my district and a lot of people who live there are too. That's, that might inform why I get a little more pushback than maybe the rest of you or some of you. But each year, at the beginning of each academic year, there's a new crop of customers, if you want to look at it that way, you need to be educated.
And ISU educates them, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Daniel.
Speaking of that, you had mentioned two universities that we've not reached out to, Rolf Holman, do that?
They don't have that need, but the bus comes right out there. I mean, we stop there, but there are two riders. Everyone's willing to get one that wants to go to Walmart, so they'll make sure it's off the Walmart back. Those almost students all have cars.
I know. They got paid for twisting. Good, next.
Um, what is next? Wasting Refugees. We budgeted two-point-two million again this year. That's all we believe we'll take in, that's all we believe we'll spend, all the public fund. So pretty straightforward.
Next.
Um, wastewater, you've got a new one here tonight. So if you find Leslie passed out a new wastewater budget to you, needs to take the place of this, the only thing we changed. Because, man, we had a little bit of a transition. We weren't quite finished with some stuff with Mark, so this is an updated budget for you. So throw the one away, the two, and stick this one in. It is less by about eight-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars, but I was thinking about something you said the other night, girl, about, you know, that two million dollars we're gonna pay back to the county. We'll have to appropriate for next year to do that, once we kind of work through all this stuff, but that would be an increase that we would probably want to put on this budget to begin to pay that ban back to the county, maybe next year, whether we do the full two million or not next year, I don't know, but probably could, but we will have to appropriate that. We do not have that in the budget.
So the correct numbers are, I'm sorry, the correct numbers are on the, the summary?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think they are, but I just.
Twenty-eight-eight thirty-seven, two-thirty-eight is the total.
The amended numbers?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks.
And then we did one other comment I would make. We broke out something that Earl would ask for, contractual services. If you look on page two of that, down at the bottom, you'll see CS billing and CS lagoons. See those two? Instead of just building it all into the contractual services, because they are contractual services, we broke the billing out of it, so we spend about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year on billing-related things. It's the company that does the billing, of course, and all the postage and all the stuff that goes with that, our billing-related costs for staff, temporary staff, our billing-related costs for the meter reads from Indian American Water and Seating Hill Water, that we have to pay every month. And so that, so when we look at that number, you see the expenses against that, that pulls it out of that, a big number of contractual services. And then the lagoon, that's the cleanup of the lagoons that we're required to do beginning in 2018, so that's a special project. And instead of just including it in contractual services and making the number just look big, it's gonna be about a million dollars to do that cleanup on those lagoons down there, so we pulled that out from such a big project.
Okay.
Cosman, Ellen. I've got several things I wanted to talk a little bit about on the wastewater utility. The pilot for the first six months was a million and a half dollars and not two million. Why wasn't it two million dollars?
Because we're required to, the two-million-dollar balance in there, and we weren't quite there, so we were able to take one-point-five versus two, because it's gotta be the two-million-dollar balance in that sum, based on our agreement with the SRF.
And I'll bet you if I pulled out my June thirty cash statement, it's gonna show a hell of a lot more than two million dollars.
We could have done it by now, we just haven't.
No, my June, yeah, two thousand and seventeen's cash statement, it's gonna show a heck of a lot more than two million dollars.
Okay.
In the pooled account, the old account before we set up. With the SRF, we have a minimum requirement in the new bank account that we set up with the SRF, over the agreement, a minimum balance of two million dollars. So we front all the wastewater expenditures out of our old pooled account, and then we will reimburse ourselves out of the new bank account we set up.
Okay.
But at the same time, we have to have a minimum of two million dollars in there. At that time, it's only enough to take a million and a half in there. You have to take into consideration the wastewater capital improvement fund that had a negative balance, and the, I think it's Fund Three Thirty, the bond fund that had a negative balance, as well as the remainder that we have in our old pooled account. So for Fund Six Twenty, we have two bank accounts, one, what we call Bank Seven, our regular cash pool, and then this new sanitary district account. So the new sanitary, their sanitary district account, there was only enough to pull in, not even a half of that.
If you could take the June thirty numbers on the cash statement and the June thirty reconciled numbers.
Say where they are.
Back statements and put those pieces together, that they, they would make.
I can do that.
Sense for me, so, but I do remember you emailing me and telling me that above two million dollars can't be pooled. Okay. Now, we talked a little bit the other night about repaying the county ban, two million in eighteen, nineteen, and twenty to get it done. And I think I remember Dennis Otten making a comment that we could make that a condition of approving that property tax bond that they want us to, to approve. So just reminded you that, that, that issue is, is out there. Now, from the first budget to the second budget, on the wastewater utility, contractual services went up about seven-hundred-thousand dollars. And somebody needs to enlighten me on this, a million dollars for lagoons. What, what, what's that all about?
All right, the IP lagoons that we've got, you know, we purchased years ago, have to be cleaned up. They're.
Why is that not the responsibility of the property owner?
Because they negotiated with them, they did the cleanup work they needed to do. In order for us to go to the next step, we have to take the remainder, everything's in one, a lot of the work's been done. It's all been put into one pond down there. There were four different ponds, and all of, and all it is is wood, wood pulp. But we are required to remove that and take it to the landfill.
So what's our total cost, past, current, future, in cleaning up these areas?
I don't know, I think we spent a few hundred thousand dollars and then when we bought it, but then we got reimbursed by selling the rest of the property, so we got a lot of that back. So this would be the kind of the total expense.
What, what do you mean, we sold?
We sold the lane South of I-70 to DNR and got most of our money back, so what we paid for that property and then we just cleaned it.
Okay, so is a million dollars due or is a million dollars just to start?
No, a million dollars will do, it'll probably be less than that, when we'll have to up the deal, and we may be able to stretch it over two years, depends on when we start. We have to start in eighteen. That's a decrease from I.D.
The Form Two for the wastewater utility, that's thirty thousand, thirty million, three hundred, it's way low. Dean's got a much higher number in his, his report.
Yep.
You know, the five-percenter that's coming in January first, so I think it's thirty-three something, you know, he had thirty-three, thirty-four in, in his, his deal.
And I don't know, and I'll just say, I didn't ask him this question, I don't know what he puts in there for non-collectible park, I'm not sure. I don't know if that's his raw revenue, or he's putting a deduction in there for those that don't pay.
He asked that question.
It's based on his analysis of the collection data. That sounds a little hard to me, but that's, we'll, we'll check it.
Yeah, that's what he told me, cause he said he tweaked it a little.
Okay, all right, just wanna make sure, I didn't have that conversation.
In the last, in the last week too. How you? All right, what's the status on the contract with wastewater?
We have an agreement that has not gone through the formal process yet, it's kind of the same place, Fire Police Department.
Is anybody getting a raise down there?
Possibly, we'll see. We, we're negotiating stuff, and so we're just talking about that, that's all I can say.
So would that impact some Me Too clauses that we have elsewhere?
No.
The Me Too clauses only, I'm sorry, public safety, police and fire.
Wherever they are, I, I haven't gone looking for them yet, but I just heard they're out there.
I guess, I guess I should ask rather than say, because I'm not sure that that's still the case. Are there only Me Too clauses for police and fire in the contract still? Or are there other units who have Me Too clauses?
No, there's no other units that have that, but.
So how's that work? If wastewater gets a raise, does that mean whoever else has a Me Too clause is entitled to a raise?
Police and fire work with each other.
Okay. So it's just those two, so they don't, if wastewater gets something, then fire, police?
That's the current contract. Changed it a few years ago.
And then I, you know, I, I had asked.
Just real quick, I don't want to interrupt you, but I thought, if I remember right, a few years ago, I thought we were gonna, we went in negotiations to try to get all the Me Too clauses out.
Except police and fire.
Cause I think all the rest of them were asked to remove theirs, correct?
They were, and they did. But, but really, it was police and fire who had reciprocal with everybody else. They all didn't have reciprocal with everybody. Police and fire had, and either the rest of them got it, they got it.
But I know in some of the other negotiations, they were asked to take it out.
Yeah, but I don't think, not many of them have. Police and fire had it for everybody, and I believe Transit also had it at one time, but not all of them. Hey, I don't remember, I don't want to quote too many different ones.
Yeah, I know, I have.
And so what we tried to do, I'm sorry, go ahead, no, please. Well, I just, what we tried to do is make sure that it's, these overlap each other sometimes, you know, they don't all follow on the same years, and so if we give it raises, then when the next cycle comes for the other ones, they don't get raised, so it all kind of, we kind of try to treat them that, equally that way.
Well, I just know I've had, I just know I've had some different departments come and say, hey, you know, we were told to take it out of ours. They got their, to keep theirs in there, so that's.
Well, this never, well, yeah, they wouldn't negotiate that out without something. We gave those other unions, if we took it out, we gave them something. We didn't just take it, they didn't just take it out without no, with nothing in the place for it. I can't remember, you know, now, gosh, I'm just, I apologize, but I don't remember what years we even did.
Yeah, cause I, I mean, that's been a common thing, that I've had different union reps and people come to me and said, hey, you know, we were told, everybody was gonna be asked to take it out. That's why we had it taken out, and then there's still two that have it, so it's just a common question I get.
Two left, we just wanted to make sure the police and fire were, were different than everybody else, so they don't get what anybody else would get.
I have.
One, I was a part of the, you know, city council representative when it came to the negotiations with police and fire. One of the things that I didn't quite understand is why do we have two different legal teams, one representing the city with regards to police and then one with fire? Why don't we have the same attorney representing both, both contracts?
Cause they're.
I know they're, I know they're different entities, I get that, but why, especially if we have a Me Too clause, I would think we'd have a lawyer doing both negotiations.
We just use, we don't use a separate lawyer for police negotiations, we use our city attorney in case of fire. We had some issues and we wanted to be able to bring in somebody who's an expert in that. That's all she does, is fire negotiation contracts in the state of Indiana.
But I would just think if we had a Me Too clause, we would have them.
There's other things in the contract that's negotiated besides that, besides that.
I know, but when, when, basically, it's almost like you're negotiating against, you would be negotiating against yourself if you knew what the police contract was gonna be if you're doing the, the fire, especially one that at the end of the day, it's Me Too though.
Well, I just think it's important to keep public safety similar, and it's any reason to do something different between, I'm, I'm okay with that.
And then with regards to wastewater, I had kind of brought it up, you know, last week, where is the, where does the internal investigation stand with what's going down on wastewater?
We continue to look at a variety of things. Terry Modis has kind of helped him with a lot of that.
Cause originally it was ADI, so now Terry is doing.
There's a lot of pieces that have shifted over for him to do some review, like today we made, you know, a decision about one of the vendors. So it's just a variety of pieces to this. So it's just a variety of pieces to this.
Okay. Do you have, and I, I mean, are you going to report the findings to the council or to the sanitary board, once all?
If we find anything.
Okay. All right. All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would ask, when the contracts are brought to us, the renegotiated contracts, that you provide a synopsis or summary of the changes, of what changed, including an explanation of why it's just for one year?
A lot of times that becomes an issue, if that's all they'll do, and then what happens if you don't have a contract?
That's all both parties will do. It takes two, it takes two parties to agree to that, or you don't have an agreement.
Right, but then what happens, what I'm saying is, if you don't get a contract, then it's a one-year, just renews, automatically renews for one year. So if the contract would end, we wouldn't have one for somebody, then they keep the existing contract for another year.
Okay.
I'm just skeptical, so.
Yep.
That's how it works.
And in that report, can we get not just salary changes, but also any benefits, time off, paid leave, everything, anything change?
You don't care about the procedural changes, like bidding, stuff like that, just anything that has to do with benefits, is that what you're thinking?
Salaries, benefits, anything that's going to cost us money.
Right, any financial.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Councilman Garrison, but I was part of those negotiations, and some of that language on bidding is a financial.
Yeah, some of it can be.
Yeah, so that needs to be, you know, shared with the council.
Right, something's increased, it definitely can be. So I understand what you're saying.
I agree with that, and I just want to make a comment about the Me Too clauses. They may only be now in two contracts, and they may only be two, police to fire and fire to police, but those are our two biggest salary departments, and liability and exposure, and so I appreciate your comments on that, Councilman Allen.
I, uh. Well, and I wasn't just picking on two departments.
No, no.
That's why, I was just, that's one of the things, I've had union reps come to me, I've had different departments, you know, the guys come to me and said, hey, you know, we agreed to this because of, and this never happened, so why? Yeah, so I'm just putting it out there, that's one of the questions I've been asked. I, uh.
Councilman Allen?
Yeah, I, I went through the salary ordinances and compared this year's to last year's, and only found one increase that's in there. And then I, but also found one where I think we had a mistake in last year's, because we had something that showed up in this year's that wasn't in last year's, and it's in our budget for last year, so I got a feeling, well, I just got missed, but, you know, no big deal. And I just want to reiterate what I said later, earlier, the borrowing, temporary borrowing, we definitely have some say in that, and be thinking about, you know, what's going to be acceptable to you for next year. I submitted some proposed changes to the CFP that would get the five million to four million, haven't gotten a response yet, but it's, it's out there. Thought that would be good to get it down to four now, rather than later, but we'll see what happens with that. Ayew?
I know we're at, on the eleventh hour this year with regards to the TAW. Have we started an initial discussions with local banking institutions on the TAW for next year?
No, because we won't be able to do that until you approve it, and we won't start that process till January.
Well, you know that you're going to, you're going to ask us, and I know last year we had, or this year we were, I mean, we had a special call, because we were waiting for the bank to make up their minds on the TAW, so we haven't had that initial discussion. Let's just, let me rephrase my question. Did, when we did the loan, did you at that time tell them, hey, we might be coming back next year once we repay?
No, because, you know, they're going to want to see the full year financial, so we'll have to be end of the year to be able to show them kind of how we did.
Okay.
And so you can't do that until January, even though they're unaudited numbers.
Okay.
That'd be something that you do in January, put that financial package together.
Okay, all right.
And then hopefully get it approved in February, it'd be the goal instead of March.
Okay.
Or any pullback.
Do you have anything else, man?
No, I do not.
We had scheduled a meeting for tomorrow to continue the discussion. I don't feel like there's a need to do that for tomorrow, unless anybody has an objection to that.
I don't have an objection to that, but I would like to just ask a couple more questions about estimated revenues.
Okay.
There's a, you know, we reached the end of the estimated expenditures in here, but budget Form Twos, I tried to interject most of my questions, but there's a summary sheet, and it's after the end of wastewater treatment, and then right at the page below it is miscellaneous revenues, estimated miscellaneous revenues. And the left column is the last six months of this year, the right column is for twelve months of next year projected. And starting at the, at the top, the second one, alcoholic beverages, liquor, exodus tax distribution, that's projected to more than double, and I wonder why? It's going for twelve, from twelve thousand dollars for six months to forty-six thousand dollars per year. Do we get my?
I'll have to check the distributions. We may get, it might be weighted where we get more at a certain time of the year.
For six months?
Yes.
That's a question.
Yeah, we only see it only a couple times a year.
The one right below that, casino and riverboat distribution.
Comes once a year, usually in August or September.
Okay, well, that answers that, because it's the same number. I thought that that was getting cut in half. And then skipping down to state, federal, and local payments and taxes, looks like it's about a million dollars less.
I think that that's also a timing issue, but I'll look that one up as well.
That's state, that's pilot.
It's something else, too, though.
Yeah, it's pilot plus something else.
State, federal, and local pilot. The local pilot would be the one we always talk about.
Yeah, we received a million and a half in the first half of the month, so that means we got two and a half million to come in, and then the second half of seventeen from the wastewater utility.
And that's, that's showing here, two million, finally.
And then we got sixty-eight thousand. And then there's four million in the budget for next year.
Four million, then sixty-eight thousand must be something else. Some smaller amounts of pilot that we received.
Okay, so I guess what this is, one thing that this is showing.
No.
How's it going?
How's it going?
I think it's more than that, though, a little bit more, but maybe.
So should we infer, then, that next year it'll be the same, that it won't be two million in the first six months, two million in the second six months, it'll be one and a half million in the first six months?
I wouldn't bet, maybe, but I don't know that. I mean, I, I can't answer that right now.
Okay. So that's a question.
But the total for the year will be right, but it's just how it comes during the year may change.
Okay. Skipping run down, cable TV licenses, zero for the last six months, and then four hundred and twelve thousand dollars for all of next year, does that just pay it once?
That pays once, and we've already received it for this year.
Well, we actually get two different payments, remember, though, we get two thousand dollars from charter, and we get four hundred dollars from the SPAR.
March or April is usually.
But they were late this year, if I remember right.
So we've already, I think we've already received.
Usually you get it early in the year, I think we got it like in June or something, because we had to call them, because they, Time Warner, you know, they bought Time Warner, and they didn't send the checks out.
And then down, second from the bottom, I see on other receipts, we're projecting a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars of extra money, other receipts.
Yeah, the six fifty, those are other miscellaneous revenues, about one point three a year, and they projected an increase of a hundred and sixty-one thousand, and I can check to see what they thought that would be.
Okay. And I think we've talked about, or that I interjected on the other ones that I was wondering about, as I flipped through the budget forms two in this, I see the EMS that we discussed, it's going to be more for billing, inspection services, fire, mountain, road. All right, that's it. Except, I guess, a general question, do you, are these the best numbers we're going to get on this one, on estimated revenues, or do you expect to have another?
I don't expect any changes, but I can go back and review these to verify the numbers you inquired about.
Okay. Thank you, Ayew.
And are there any, are there any new protected revenue streams that you guys are looking at?
Nope.
For eighteen.
Speaking of revenues, what kind of conversations do you have with the county council with regards to the local auction contacts?
I've had several, numerous individual conversations with members of the council, and none with some.
I noticed they've had some public forums, where you're talking about going to a public forum and expressing your thoughts on the local auction contacts?
I mean.
Because I know they've had, and there's some council people up here that have been to numerous meetings, and they're kind of redundant, but I'm just curious what your thoughts are going and expressing that publicly?
You know, it's their call to do that, and if the city benefits, it does, but for us to go up and try to convince them to do something for our benefit, I don't think is the right thing to do. It's their issue to deal with. If they adopt a public safety mode, and we benefit by getting some of that, that's fine, but to interject ourselves into that process, I don't think it's a good thing to do on behalf of the city of Carolina.
Well, last night, there was probably nineteen people that spoke of objection to the increase in tax, of course, and probably nine of them stated that they felt like it was a bailout for the city. So wouldn't it be beneficial for you there to kind of?
My guess is, my comments wouldn't help much. You know, I heard Earl made some comments last night that were well received, but no, and having conversations with some of the county council members, they didn't think that would be a good thing either. And commissioners.
Yeah, that was a spur-of-the-moment decision on my part, based upon somebody's comment that nobody from the city was here to speak. And I talked to them just briefly, didn't have much time to put notes together, but didn't try to take any position on that or encourage that, and just wanted to let them know, if they think we can have a successful county without a successful city, go for it. So that's, that's the best I could, I could say. Whether I was right or wrong, you know, I don't know, but it's to do, to say anything, but that's, that's the decision that could be.
All right, so are we all in agreement that there's no need to meet tomorrow?
So you're officially canceling the meeting?
Correct.
So I would say that, kind of, if anybody's got any questions, let us know now, and get them to you immediately, and we'll start putting some of the summary stuff together until we get before the next meeting.
Come on, you chose, she wants to email you, so she wants to email you, correct?
Absolutely, because it's easier to understand it. If you say it, sometimes running, not saying wavelength. Email it, it's easier to answer.
I have one quick, little question, too. Any corrections or anything that's being changed? I would, speaking for myself, I like to have those as soon as they're done versus on the night before we're getting ready to vote or anything, so I have time to review them.
Well, we won't do anything after, whatever we're going to change will bring to the first meeting in October, so you'll have three weeks, four weeks of it, having, you know, unless you guys change something.
I'm just saying, I just don't want it the night of the sunshine meeting or the night of.
We'll bring it the sunshine meeting, no, and then there won't be a vote on it until...
I'm sorry, there's a little confusion. Voting is October twelfth on the general fund budget.
Oh, I thought you guys.
Sanitary is October twentieth.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay.
I'd just like to have a little bit of time to review, not something.
And it'll be minimal.
Put on this at the last minute, whether it's minimal or not.
Yep, understand.
Ayew?
Yeah, I just, just thinking out loud a little bit, I don't know what everybody's thoughts are on the council as far as expenditures being less than revenue, what that amount would be, if anybody had their choice, what would it be? I'd like to see it, like a million dollar reduction, I think, would be something, where I think last year with Earl's motions, we got to seven hundred and fifty thousand less. If we could take a little bit more away, you know, to help us out, that would be great. I'm just curious what everybody's goal is, a million dollar reduction, or less, less than revenue. Okay, all right. Good luck, best of luck.
Okay, if it's all done, I move to adjourn.
Second.
The move by Councilman Azar, second by Councilman Garrison, that we adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn.